I'll call the commission meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please call the robe.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
Present.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. Y'all join me with the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thanks for being here today. Record for the 25th. What a beautiful day outside. So, first line of business that we need to approve today's agenda, we need to... We have a lot of minutes that we're approving today in financials. We've got one financial, but let's do the minutes first. We have January 16th, that's a closed session. We have January 17th, that's a regular session. We have January 21st is a regular session. January 30th is a closed session. January 30th is a regular session. February 6th is a regular session. February 7th is a regular session. February 13th is a regular session. I think this is the record, so Ms. Matty must have been very busy getting those done. We have one financial, Certified Court Order 02-25-2025-01. It's CART Fund. We had a distribution of $222,963.28 divided and dispersed between Common 1, Common 2, and the six different special robe districts. And I would accept a motion to approve-
Point of order. We have two financials. There's a second point on there.
There's a second?
On that first sheet.
On the first sheet?
Yep. Underneath the Certified Court Order. Certificate of Redemption.
Let's see. Oh, skip it, sorry. Oh, we have a certificate of redemption that we need to approve too. Sorry. So many financials and minutes, I didn't see that, so skip that. So, now we need a motion to approve the consent agenda statement.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. So, first item on the agenda today is recorder, Ms. Hall, updating signature cards.
Yes. Basically, I'm just asking you guys to sign a letter to take to the bank to remove Judy Trump as a signer effective of the 28th, because that will be her last day of work, because she is retiring.
How many years has Ms. Judy worked?
I don't remember. Eighteen.
Eighteen years. Wow. That's a long time. So, we really appreciate all the years that she gave to the county.
And we will be having a little get-together in here for Friday, for everybody to come.
Well, we will-
Let me go into training.
We will be going to training to make sure-
Unless you want to rush back.
I may write her a note or something.
Depends on what kind of dessert you serve.
White cake.
That's worth it.
Can you say you're making the same punch that Karen's-
Same punch as Karen's. White cake, buttercream icing, but Bavarian cream filling.
Oh.
Something new.
We will meet there.
Might be worth the speaking.
It's all about the cake.
When you guys are all melted, I can come back to you if this-
Yeah.
Unless you're under 20.
You've got a couple more seconds.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you very much.
Alright. The next item on the agenda is Resource Management Director Todd.
Good morning, sirs.
Upcoming vacancy on board. Planes open.
Yes, one of the commissioners informed me a while back that he really needed to step down from the P&amp;D Commission for family reasons. Phil Short, he's been on the Commission for a very, very long time. But I just wanted to provide you with copies of the applications, if you will, that I've received from three potential commissioners to replace him. And give y'all some time to look through those, make some contacts if you want to. And then hopefully at some point in the not-too-distant future, select one and go ahead and appoint them. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
You have, pardon me, you have one resignation from the board, but how many terms are actually or how many positions are actually up this year for reappointment?
None are up this year, it'll be next year.
Okay, so there are none this year from the natural cycle?
Right.
Okay. I looked on our website the other day and didn't see that listed as who they are and what their terms of service are.
Yeah, I suppose we could add that to the website.
I think that would be nice, a transparent piece, just so anybody looking knows who they are and when their terms expire.
Yeah.
We had an election last night at Planes zoning. We had an election of officers again, and all three officers were re-nominated and re-elected for another term as an officer.
Yeah, and I don't believe Phil's not one of the officers, so-
No. And Phil's been here a long time. He was a really good, as I've observed, a really good board member, so they'll miss, we'll miss him, but-
Twenty years or so.
Yeah. Alright, well, I appreciate these applications, and you still are accepting applications, right?
Yeah, we actually will take them all the time and hang onto them.
Continually.
Yeah.
It's the very first thing on your website, you see it when, I mean, people, if they want to complain and say they don't know, but it says that when you pull up your website, it tells people they can fill out an application whenever they want to. And you still should do it, even if there's not an opening right now, you should still do it.
Yeah. It's just one of those positions that people are not lining up to volunteer for, but so anytime we have someone that shows some interest, we definitely hang on to that information.
Okay.
Did you have a date that they would... Is the person already out, already stepped away?
We don't have an official letter of resignation.
Okay.
And he served last night, so I mean, he probably is going to serve until we find somebody, but we can find somebody, you know, we'll-
So, this gives us time to call, interview people, talk to people, things like that?
If that's how you want to do it.
I just wondered how what your timeframe was and when you were naming the person.
You know, probably in the next month or so, we'd like to make a selection. The statute really doesn't provide a whole lot of guidance, other than the commission appoints.
Yeah, I would like to try to make sure that we have somebody selected before their next meeting.
That would be great, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Just that person, whoever goes on, I mean, there's Planes zoning is, to me, one of the more complicated boards and commissions to serve on, because there are so many different regulations to kind of get up to speed, so, you know, they're not going to be necessarily effective for a couple of meetings until they get their feet wet. And so, as soon as possible, I think would be the best. I would like to shoot to have a selection within the next two weeks at the latest, my opinion. I mean, and there's only three applications, so-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
The process should be-
We'll be gone the rest of this week, but we'll be back, so we have plenty of time to knock that out next week.
Yeah. We can do that, so we'll have your next board member, we'll do that.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item is Employee Services Director, Ms. Amber, Employee Survey Result. Presentation.
Good morning. Hello. I have the clicker thing to Mitch, so this is going to be really high-tech today. So, we conducted an employee survey in November. This was completed in November. I have compiled the results to show you. We do one for the sheriff's office and then one for the other employees. They're only different in the sense that they're a little bit more tailored to the sheriff's office, but the questions are the same. So, what I'm presenting to you today is a summary of all of that. Remember that this is supposed to be getting a pulse of what is out there, but you also have to remember this is what people felt that day, so we'll go forward. This is our second one. I kept the questions the same from the last time, except for, we had some feedback, I think it might have been Miranda, or that they didn't want anything that was identifiable, so I took off the question that they felt maybe would pinpoint them too much of who was their supervisor, and we left the first question, well, we'll go through them, but it's virtually the same from the last time. Forty-eight percent of the employees participated. Our goal was 50, so we're pretty close to that. I'm going to consider that a win. The survey was open for two weeks, and we sent multiple requests and invitations to participate, so everybody definitely had the opportunity. It contained 15 questions, and it took them an estimated time to complete of six minutes. And I do like to point out that that is actually one or two less questions, and they took longer to complete, so I do think that they thought about it more this year. So, the first question, what I have done here is I have just set up all 15 questions with a summary under each, and we can discuss as we go. The first question is obviously going to be what department or office do I work under? Because I knew that, once I have received all of them, then I can go pull them out by office to see if there's specific issues in each office. Again, I don't get, it's completely anonymous. I said this last time, and I mean it, because sometimes people say things that are alarming to me, and I absolutely would want to find out who it is, but I have safeguards set up to where I can't even go do it after the fact. So, it is completely anonymous. Second question, overall, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with your supervisor? This is a good response, because as you can see here, 75% of our employees are either satisfied or very satisfied with their supervisor, which if you look, I consider neither dissatisfied or satisfied as a negative, because if you're not feeling that it's a positive enough, I consider that to be a negative. So, you only have 25% of the employees who were dissatisfied with their supervisor. That is an improvement from last year, so 75% is a positive. I asked this question as well. Do you feel that your department head or elected official is fair and reasonable? That was an over, I mean, like, that is 100% a great response, that's an overwhelming yes on that. Question four, for the position that you have, how satisfied are you with your salary? Twenty-five percent were either extremely satisfied or very satisfied. You had 59% of the employees say that they were somewhat satisfied, with only 15% being not so satisfied. Obviously, there is room for improvement on this one, but the 25% being extremely or very is slightly increased from last year, so it's moving in the right direction. Obviously, I will say we always have work in this area, and with Missouri passing the minimum wage, this is something that definitely is on our radar for this year, and I, you can plan to have these conversations for the 2020, for the next year's budget, 2026, starting with me in June. I don't necessarily think that I will be seeing a colic, except for we're going to have to look at our actual matrix, because we're going to have to look, right now, we bring the lowest rate that we come in, 16, which right now, minimum wage is 13, or it was when we set it up. But when it's going to be 15, we can't have our minimum person coming in at 16. Obviously, we're going to have to adjust that. So, anyway, that's a lot for this question, but there you go. Question five is, are you satisfied with the county's benefits package? You can see here that we had, majority of our people are satisfied, we're very satisfied, but we still have some that are either not satisfied, dissatisfied, and then very few, I think actually only two people said very dissatisfied in the whole survey. This is an improvement from last year as well. So, I'm always going to have complaints about this. It is expensive to insure your dependents, it's expensive to insure your dependents anywhere you work. It's just not something that is super, I mean, it used to be that places made this, you know, more, nobody covers their employees fully anymore, and we still do that, so I have to say that's a positive for us, but that does leave us to where our dependents are still expensive. It's a balance. And then, question six is an open-ended question, so I made a little, what are those called? Word bubbles for you to see the, but the top comments, your people, the best part of their job was an overwhelming, they like their job and they like helping citizens, and they like serving justice, which we can see that that is probably going to be limited to a couple of offices, but that's your overwhelming. People like the work they do, they like helping citizens, and they like providing justice. Those are the main reasons people like their job. Some other things are people like their coworkers, some people really like the flexibility in their schedule. You have people on here, you had, if you see it on here, that means multiple people have said it, some of the one-offs are not. You can have like, they give what they call you an emotional response of how many, but they're the single ones. You had very positive responses on this one. People also really like their paid holidays, so that's always a bonus. Question seven, what's the most difficult part of your job? Your top comments were rude or angry citizens, politics and drama, and coworkers are the best part and the worst part, so they're always going to be on both sides. Supervisors who don't deal with issues, I do find that to be limited to offices, so I, and when anybody has an issue that they have to deal with by their department, I meet with them individually. I'm not going to spread all of that information here. And then, the lack of equipment, software, or old, that is, I did a little research into that, a lot of that are radios, and some is software that's outdated or needs updated, and IT is aware of that, and we are on a rotation now of trading out people's computers. We hope to have this done in like, what, I don't know-
Three years.
Three years. We'll be back to where we always should have been, but we're getting there. Software, we can't fully, IT does not control that, that's going to be by office, they pick whatever software they want on their own. And heck, that could have been against me, because we were rolling on Criterion at that time, and nobody liked it, including me. And so, and then the environment, there are some issues with politics and drama and environment, and coworkers, those are all kind of, you're going to always have some of that, because there's always some issues, but it's on here because it was listed multiple times. Question eight, this is not, this is worse from last year, this is the one that is more negative from last year. It's how likely would you recommend Christian County to a friend? And you want to see promoters, you want somebody who's, this was given to them as a list from one to five, like, how likely are you to do that? You want somebody to say nine or 10, because that or, those are going to be the people who said, yeah, you should come and work here. It has been proven that people who are passive, who list seven to eight, they're not going to be your promoters. They might not say anything bad, but they're definitely not going to be trying to get people to come work here, or say that it's a great, I mean, they're not going to be negative, but they're definitely not being your promoters, that's why they're listed as passives. And then you have people who are between zero and six, who are going to say, do not come work at County. And you can see that that is 33, 31, and 37. We want to work to make that higher. I am giving you the real results, and this is the only one that is worse from last year, which definitely is something we want to work on.
So, Ms. Amber, so that, I think that's a serious thing that we need to think about, so when people answer that, and we've got worse results than last year, but they don't really tell us, they're not really telling us why they feel that way.
Oh, they do.
Oh, they do? So, you've got the reasons why? Okay, okay.
And this is, this is one of 15 questions, and you have to remember, this is how they felt that day.
Yeah.
And if you have out of 15 questions, only one that is worse from last year, I still consider this a win, but it is not something we want to not be aware of and work on, it's definitely something we want to improve.
This is something that HR then starts to work on with individuals and trying to figure out?
We've already, I've already done that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're definitely working-
Perfect.
On the issues.
Perfect.
And elected officials who have not heard from me, you're not in the list, so it's a good thing.
Okay.
Question nine, how would you rate the facilities in which you work? This is a very positive, you have less than 20% who are saying fair or poor, this is a positive. It's always important, people want to go to work in a nice place, that they take pride in, it's one of the reasons we ask that question. Question 10, are you currently looking for other employment? This is an improvement from last year. You had more people looking for other employment last year than you did this year. This is one of those ones that I find is very much a win, because you have less than 10% of people, actually, I think it was 7% of people who are looking for a job, which is good. Again, more people were looking last year. So, question 11, I ask these in different ways too, so I can try to see what the, when you ask them in different ways, you can try to figure out the real reason when you see what's reflected. So, what would you change about your job? People say leadership, you're always going to have people say higher pay. Interesting on this one, multiple people said that they want more respect for the job that they do. What I can't tell you on that is, is it respect from their supervisors, or is it respect from citizens? My guess would be that it's probably both. Communication, they want more PTO, more training, more flexibility, which you have to remember, on what was positive, we had flexibility, which was positive. So, some offices are flexible, some aren't, that kind of goes along with that. And we did change PTO. That was something that multiple people felt that we were behind on, and that is something that we changed, so I think that the employees can see that that's a direct result from them participating in the survey and bringing those things to our attention, so. Did you receive enough training to do your job effectively? I like to look at these, because the people who answer no, I want to know the divisions or the departments that they're in, or the offices, so we can focus on those. This was higher last year as well, and I think that some of that is a testament to, I know a couple of offices specifically that have implemented new hire training and have made that a focus, so I think that we're in a positive on that. That was something that came out of the survey from last year, that we have now seen an improvement on. Thirteen, is there anything especially challenging you have to contend with? This is another way to answer what are the issues, so we try to get, and you're going to see the common problems here, supervisors, environment or software, lack of new equipment. Office space is coming up on one particular department, which I will address with that person, which they may bring to you later, but that is a complaint from one specific area. Coworkers are always going to be positive and negative, and then you, I have found that you have more comments on aggressive or angry public this year, and that's just probably a nature of society. I mean, I just think that we have that difficulty. I do think that offices have a good way of, I know several department heads and elected officials that step in and try to handle those, and they have a plan for those type of situations. How would you rate your job satisfaction? You have the most excellent and very good, but then you have your yellow line at good. This one's hard for me to say is a negative, I actually count this as a positive, because of the actual word that it's using is good, so you're saying it's good, it's just not great, so I count that as a win. So, you have very few people, I believe that it was like 11% who said for or poor, so you have a high satisfaction rate. And the last question is question 15, and I'm going to tell you, the majority of people skipped this question this year, and I did allow it to be skipped, because you don't have to answer an open-ended question like this. But it's a last attempt to make sure that we're capturing every issue and asking it a different way. Are there any comments that you'd like to let us know that weren't addressed in the survey? It comes back to the same things. They want supervisor training, which was interesting, because I will, we did implement that this year. I actually started even training, we do a HR training for corporals, sergeants in the jail, but I'm wondering if I need to open that to other offices as well, to do like a more blanket HR training, so that was interesting. And then a lack of leadership, which I have dealt with individually, as well as the favoritism and toxic environment. Some people in this building want facility updates and improvements, that was mentioned about, I think, three or four times, and that was to this building, I found.
Did they actually mention those updates, or did they just said updates?
Yes, some of them, they, yeah, one person said even a new coat of paint would do us wonders. And then some just said, we need to update the building. I mean, because I don't get them as like, what, I mean, it's going to be like, it's a summary, you know? But there are some specifics on there, one about the paint, and then there was another one, I'll have to look back at it. Some people want more scheduling options, which is really hard to do when you are open from 8 to 4:30 every day. I think the offices that are already are running 24/7, they do have multiple scheduling options. Maybe that is people who want 10-hour days and to rotate out, but it's really hard to do, so I don't think you can fix that one. And then, there have been, there were very pointed comments in this one to me about issues with elected officials that I have to deal with individually, but it was enough that I did add it on here. So, all in all, I think that, obviously, we're going to continue to do these, I think it's a good thing to do, and actually, after you have three years, I can show you, we'll have enough data to kind of show you where we are trending after, we have one more year of these, so I like it. I want, the other thing that I could do before we roll out this year, I'm hoping that after two years of me never coming to say what anybody said, we'll let them believe in us that it is anonymous, and we continue to get more participation. I think when people start to see some positive outcomes from this, we'll get more people participating as well, because they'll start to believe that it's worth it, and that we're listening. And I'd like there to be promoter, I'd like for supervisors and elected officials to promote it more. Right now, I'm doing it alone, like, HR is just like, do this, and we're trying to get people to, I think that it's going to take more than just us urging people to take it, and I think that, like I said, department heads and elected officials are going to have to try to encourage their people to participate and remind them that it is anonymous, and we want to hear from them. But overall, I do think this is still a positive, I do, I feel better, but any-
So, Ms. Amber, so 48% participation, that's pretty good, and what was it, the first year?
50.
50, so we slipped 2%, but that's still, I guess that's still bad.
I did send it to everybody this year too, like, even reserves, everybody that, because you sent it to everybody with an email address, and we didn't always have those email addresses, but now we're capturing, we started capturing those, so it did go out to more people this year too. I'd say we probably, even though it's 2% left, I'd say it's pretty flat, I think it was the same people, I'd like to get more people to do it.
If it's a six-minute timeframe, is there a way for us to possibly give them time- limit work to do that, where we could get closer to a hundred percent?
Oh, they do. They are doing that work.
Is there a way to block time? You know what I'm saying? Like, possibly, I'm just trying to think of a way to get, possibly get a little higher percentage of-
I think it's going to be the department heads or elected officials of their office saying, hey, why doesn't everybody do it before they go to lunch today?
Sure.
Or, you know, before you clock out.
Because they're getting paid to do it anyway.
I think it's going to just be more encouragement for that. I can tell them they have taken them. I mean, I get all the analytics on that side. They're doing it for the most part of work. Actually, a lot of people did it on a Saturday too, so that tells me that those are people who have their email on their phone and can log in.
Okay. Would it be beneficial if we, uh, before we did the survey, before we started the survey, to have, have elected officials and department heads meet together with the commission and you, and just for a short meeting, not, not a real long meeting, just to get people pumped up and ready to go and promote this thing, why it's important, um, and just kind of go over maybe two or three points, and then send those people back out to hopefully that they'll encourage all their employees to participate.
I mean, I, I want that to, and the questions are going to be the same, so I can do that three-year comparison. That's going to be the best way to show you how we're moving, how we're trending. But I do think that we need to get the message out to make sure-
Because I think it starts at the top. I think it starts at the top. If, if you wanted employees to, to participate, you, the, the leader has to think it's important, and he needs to-
Yep.
He or she needs to say, hey, employee, have you done this yet? I'd like for you to, if you can. You know, you can't make anybody, but if you encourage-
No, you can't, and you don't want to incentivize-
If you have a positive encouragement, you, you would get more people to maybe participate.
And people ask me, are, is it really, I don't feel like it's, you know, anonymous, and I'm like, I, it's anonymous. I can't tell you any other way that it's sent to you from your email. The reason that it says it's coming from, it's coming from Survey Monkey, the reason it says it's coming from me is so our firewall will recognize that it's, the only other thing I could do is send them a link and have them go out. And maybe I try that next year, so maybe they think that, but then you still have to do it from the email that was sent to you, because I can't have multiple entries from the same.
Sure.
Um, because you want to try to keep it as, you, you want it to make sure that it's not being-
Yeah.
-messed with, so that it's accurate. But we can, we can talk maybe about that, if anybody wants to, if we do have a meeting, maybe they can bring any concerns that we have, so we can debunk those, um, because I spend a lot of time saying, I promise I can't, I'm telling you, sometimes I wish I could, sometimes I wish I wouldn't, but I don't.
No.
And if they, they say, you're going to know it's me, I'm like, well, then don't write it to where it's you. I mean, don't say it if you're going to be like, I think that, I mean, you can make your comments as specific as you want, so.
Well, I think, how much does it cost us to do, how was county pay per year to do that?
So, the fish, first year we did it, it was five hundred dollars, because I did the analytics. This year, we paid for them to do it on the backside, so we had a more accurate assessment, because it's hard to do when you do open-ended questions. Um, and we paid fifteen hundred. I don't know how, I still ended up doing most of it myself, so I'm not sure if we'll do the fifteen, fifteen as max.
Yeah. Well, see, I think that's a, I think that's a worthwhile investment, because, because especially if, and I, I know that's what you're trying to do. You get the survey results, and now you need to analyze them and, and talk to some people and, and do some things and, and see if we can make improvements. Uh, if, if we don't make any improvements, and we kind of just take the survey and we don't really act on anything, then it could be a waste of money. But I think that, that we're smart enough and, and your department is good enough that we can actually gain knowledge to make our county better, government better. So, I, I, I'm really proud that we're doing it. I don't think it's a waste of time, I don't think it's a waste of money. So, so, I think it's important.
Any questions you guys have?
Any comments, questions? Okay, well, we'll continue to, to do that, on that. The next item, the next item is the Employee Services Director again. Ms. Amber, we're going to talk about special event policy, contract review.
Okay. Um, so back in December, I presented to you guys, well, you weren't here, but-
Yeah.
Um, I did send you everything, kind of, I'd start you to see.
Yep.
Um, because we, last year, you approved the special event permit, and then you approved the food trucks. The food trucks weren't discussed, they, they weren't discussed again, and those have remained the same unless I've told otherwise today. But I didn't, we didn't discuss that in December, and I didn't think that that was an issue, but I brought it just in case you wanted to talk about it. Um, because what I presented was an addendum to the special events. We talked about the issues that had happened while we were using the special events and how you wanted to address them. I think, I, I think at the time I gave four options, and we kind of talked through them, and you wanted to do a work study. And then today, I don't know if we're going to treat this as a work study, or if you guys want me to just present so you can think about it again and add it to another agenda to vote, because your options are the same. You, you can keep it as is, you can add the addendum that allows for the use of utilities and the addition of an employee, um, or you can make it first come, first serve, um, without a contract, or you can amend the contract and make it to where, if an entity wants to have something down here, they just have to ask to use utilities, um, an employee. So, it's really, what, what do you guys want, what direction do you want this to go in?
Let me say one thing, and I, I want to see what Commissioner Jackson and both Commissioner Williams has to say, but, but, um, for Commissioner Williams, since he's, wasn't here last year when we did it, um, bring us up to date, what our attorney, Mr. Fax, has kind of helped us, guided us some on liability, protection of liability and, and, and our utilities and things like that. So, that addendum, maybe you could just explain that to, and that'll be a refresher for us, and then we'll kind of start off with what Commissioner Jackson has idea, or if he has an idea, and we'll, we'll kind of, I'd like to, I'd like to vote on it today, if we can, and get this started, because we've got food trucks wanting to start. We, we, we need to.
Yeah. So, food trucks is not changing. Does anybody want to change food trucks agreement?
Well, I know that, uh, Recorder Hall had talked about the fee for food trucks. She had gotten some feedback that it was, uh, too expensive, and food trucks didn't want to pay for that, and, and I don't know that that's accurate, and I'm trying to remember what we set the fee at.
Ten dollars a time, or forty dollars for four calendar days.
Yes, and it's not too expensive.
I don't think so either. But then we have to charge them something for use of, otherwise they're gaining money off of our-
Absolutely, right.
We have to have an exchange of funds.
Well, there has to be, there has to be a, a process for private gain on public space.
Yes.
Um, the fee associated with it, I don't think really determines anything, other than if they're plugging into electricity, they are using something that we're paying for, so recouping some of those funds. And I don't know what a, pardon me, I don't know what a twenty-amp service on a food truck is drawing on a day's time, you know, for five or six hours that they're here. I don't know if that's-
It's still very, depending on what their setup is greatly.
Yeah.
Like the pizza truck we have here, and they were running two fifty-amp circuits, and they were still paying the ten-dollar fee, um, so a hundred amps. Some of these guys come out here, and they're literally just running lights and maybe one fridge. So, I mean, it's, it's the same fee, but there's, without a meter on that circuit. You can't really tell what's going on.
Trying to figure out what the average usage, I would, I would think that maybe it balances out at, at ten dollars or, or whatever, and that's not a, a high fee at all to-
Because there's only what, a couple, a couple hours blocked that they're here?
Yeah, they can only get it from, uh, they can have it from seven AM to two PM at the most.
But the majority is that lunchtime, eleven to one?
They come and set up, like, I think we had one person who came early, because it was coffee and donuts, like they were here when people were walking in. Um, but most people come in like nine, and then they stay, and they go through lunch.
The one trailer got dropped off like ahead of time, but they-
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they're not left up.
Yeah.
So, that's a separate contract, and I didn't think this was changing. I know people don't like the fee, but I really think that you went as low as we could. We have to exchange some.
Ten dollars is reasonable.
And the reason they're not getting any additional fee for that is because you're here during the day, Monday through Friday, when we already have employees here who can, who are available to, you know, and if anything would happen if you tripped.
And it's a nice service for employees that have a thirty-minute lunch, don't have time to get somewhere else to grab a minute, I don't see anything as-
So, to roll this out this year, um, I'm going to have Carrie send an email to all elected officials and department heads and ask for any days that they want blocked off the calendar for like elections or anything that would be coming up, that they do not want to have food trucks here for. We'll block those off of a calendar that is shared, and then we'll start, we have two people who have called in, and we'll start letting them. And when they call in, they pay forty dollars. They get to pick four dates on the calendar for that, so it's, we have them do it in a four pack, but then you get four times that you get. And we only allow one time, and it's for some, I mean, like you can't call and-
One per day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, and if you have already signed up for tomorrow, and I get another call that's once tomorrow, you don't get it, you got to pick another day, so.
Sure.
And that is all spelled out in here.
Yeah, I think the food truck is, is easy enough.
So, um, then we move to the special event.
Okay.
The special event, oh, and there's insurance you have to have on here, have to, you have to have insurance, you have to leave the grounds, is what they were. It's all the same.
Yep.
And everybody did that last year, so we didn't have a problem with that.
People complained because they didn't want to pay anything, but you can't do that on-
Right.
-our, you can't do that on public property. You have to, we have to have a transaction. Um, and you have to have a, a health, you have to, you have an inspection, all those things are lined down there. And we have a checklist for whoever, well, it'll be.
What's the, uh, what's the insurance policy? I got Carrie, three million?
No, that's for special events. For a food truck, I think it's one.
One million, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's one. And then, yeah.
Thanks, one.
And then, um, special events is a different thing. Special event is you want to reserve the grounds when we are not here, like, um, Friday night or Saturday, like you want it when we're not in business technically. And you want your group to like take over for, for an event. And the way this was drafted was to let them, it's a temporary license agreement that gives them the rights to the grounds for that time period. And it's the same, some of the same rules, but this time you have to have three million dollars in insurance. Um, you have to make sure that you leave it, but it's the same rules of hazardous material, you can't leave any trash, there's no alcohol. Um, it's not, I mean, it's all, Austin Fax lined this out, um, to be what it is. We started using it, and then people started using, and there's, there's no use in here of electricity or utilities. We did not have that in here, because, um, we didn't address it at that time. We didn't think anybody would be using it. So, then it came up that people wanted to use the electricity and utilities, and, um, so I wrote up a special addendum that says, okay, there'll be an addendum to this contract if you want to use our utilities. And, um, if you use the utilities, it has in here that you would have to, for whatever timeframe that you're using them, that you will have to pay for an employee to come in, um, and it puts the timeframe and an hourly amount plus a thirty-five percent additional fee for, well, what the county would have to pay for the employee, like surf and loggers and tech, like those type of things. Uh, workers comp. But this did not go into place. This was not voted, because they, at the time, felt that it was too expensive for a nonprofit to have to pay, because it's going to be like, I think it was like seven hundred, six hundred dollars additional. Um, and so this was not put into play. But people would come and do the special event, and they would use our electricity and our water, or they had employees, and we didn't have it covered. So, that, that meant that that fee went to the taxpayer, and we don't, we needed to stop it. So, that's what we put a halt on in December. It was no more special events until we talked this through this, and what we wanted to do. Because if we, the other issues are, if you are going to do this, we need to have, you know, you had mentioned like putting up a sign that says, you know, a special event is planned for this time, so, because we had one person, or one group that rented it and then got here, and other people were here, and we had no process in place for them to call and say, hey, someone else is here, but I've already paid. So, then I think it was you who mentioned maybe, because the city had just even like a sign up that said this is reserved, that grounds are reserved from this time to this time. And then to put a phone number of who to call if, you know, issues come up. That's if you don't want to use utilities, because if you do have utilities, that what we were presenting was to have an employee that would come for that. Um, that's still kind of where I'm at. I just, you guys need to say what you want, and then we'll finalize the agreements, and then we'll start.
What was the need for the employee to be here for if they use electricity? Is there something that is?
Well, it's, it's a liability.
Okay.
You have to uncover, is Richard here?
Yeah.
Yep. That's why I'm asking.
You have to uncover the, you, you say it.
So, we have a hole in the ground over here with water and power. Um, we have power on three corners of the property. We have water at the building, um, so if somebody does, you got cords, you got trip hazards, um, you got wet grounds, you might have a potential shock hazard. Those need to be properly addressed. Uh, sometimes, it's very often that we have to reset breakers when you're using the power at the light ballards, because people want to bring in a heater. There's three light ballards on one breaker, and you got two heaters going, guess what? You're tripping breakers.
And the breakers are inside the building?
They're inside the basement.
Yeah.
Uh, so you got Jeff eyes on each, each one of those, on all three of those, but you also have a breaker inside the basement.
Okay.
Um, we have a breaker out here in the handle where the power is. You've got four fifty-amp circuits in there. That's a lot of power inside the ground. So, if the weather's not right, you got an issue. We have to put fencing up, so nobody tripping, trips and falls in that. Those can all be set up and addressed, but if no one's here and there is an issue, there's no one to address the issues that may come up. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, didn't we ask the, our attorney said something about liability, or was it the insurance company that said we should have somebody here, recommended it, or stated that we had to? I'm not sure.
We didn't have to, but it was recommended. And then, um, also because if you do trip something bad enough, you're going to mess with IT and you're going to mess with security. I mean, so it's just recommended.
Okay.
And that's not, it's not mandated, but that's why it's recommended, because of the liability that all of those issues can, and you can say that we hope that those don't happen, but we have to prepare that they may, so.
What is the cost for people that want to have a worker here if they have an event? Is it hourly, is it per event?
It's hourly, at an overtime rate, um, with thirty-five percent. Hold on. Actually, this is not accurate, because this was from last year.
The addendum that you sent out, you mentioned eight hours, is that a minimum or a maximum?
It'd be a maximum.
Okay.
No, I guess you could have more. I did put that. No, you can have more.
Okay, so it's a minimum?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you had a ten-hour event, right?
I don't want to cover fast, I'm usually here twelve to fourteen hours. That's just the one big event, but none of the other events that we've had so far are come close to that.
So, if you're here for like a four-hour event, do you, is it automatically, or they build eight hours, is that what I'm understanding, when you say minimum?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Um, if you only had four, I think that we would have to amend it to four-four.
I'm just asking, I don't know how, what kind of offense to hold here.
I don't want to make it more, I mean, I think it's to make it accurate.
The addendum should just be straight hourly, to the hours.
For, for, we can make it for a period of eight hours, we can take that out and just save for what the contract is. Um, so if it, if it was a twelve-hour day, you're looking at about six fifty, add it six hundred and fifty dollars.
For a ten-hour day, you said?
That was twelve.
Twelve.
So, you got to think that's probably the high end. And that's, I mean, like, you have to get down to, it would be exactly what they needed.
You're pushing right around fifty dollars.
So you gotta think that's probably the high end. And that's, I mean, like you have to get down to, it would be exactly what they needed.
You're pushing right around fifty dollars.
You also have to then, I mean, that adds a layer to, if you are reserving it, then we have to secure an employee before we could.
I'm assuming this has to be a certain employee that can do all the things that he's talking about.
It's gonna be one of us three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want me here doing this.
Or me.
Or Brian. Brian will come over and take care of it.
I mean, we joke.
Me?
You got keys.
Good, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, we joke and like, you can have me because I can cover here.
You live the closest. I do live the closest, yeah, the, the emergency responder.
So the question was, is do we make this? Do we do this? Or do you have just a contract with no utilities? Or do you let it become first, first, first come, first served for all citizens with, without utilities? I mean, I don't want to stop people from being able to do things. We just have to make sure that if we're going to allow them, that we're covered.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that. You know, so I, I do events, you know, through my philanthropic activities and, and just trying to, to figure things out. If it's a first come, first serve, no organization's going to want to do anything because there's no guarantee that they would be able to do anything. So they're, I think it's best, in our best interest to have that reservation piece and have the permit in place. Most people that are going to be doing something are going to need electricity in one way, shape or form. You, you could do an event without electricity, but then you got, you know.
Generators.
Generators that are so obnoxiously loud. I know that, you know, last year, like doing market days on, on a Saturday, the food truck is here on the property and it's running a generator because we didn't, the club didn't secure electricity. That generator is so obnoxiously loud that nobody wanted to be anywhere near the food truck. But the, an event like that is being run by a nonprofit that's donating their, their proceeds back into different charities. They're not generating enough money to necessarily have electricity for eight hours and an employee. There's not enough profit, I guess, to offset a six hundred and fifty dollar cost on a ten hour day on a Saturday.
Twelve.
Or.
It's about, it comes out to just a little fifty dollars an hour is basically what it comes down to.
So that's not a big event. Like Oktoberfest, the Surtoma Club I'm involved in put on that event, and it did generate enough revenue to offset an employee, you know what I'm saying? So some, some events are smaller that might still want to use power and some events are bigger in scope that they can offset or absorb those costs. So I don't know.
So keep it in an addendum because we can't make an addendum and then say, oh, but you're not going to make enough money to do this.
Oh, sure, sure.
It has to be the same.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, how can we do something that's uniformed that covers everybody? And I get, I guess I get the liability of, I mean, I get the liability of having food trucks plugged in with, with bigger breakers and stuff, but, you know, I'm, I'm heavily involved in the duck race where we've got thirty food vendors plugged in the poles in the park and the, the city doesn't require an employee to be on site to handle any of the issues. Now those, all those receptibles are above grade and not below grade, but.
And not tied to their building.
True.
It's not going to impact our office building, their structure.
That's the problem is this location's kind of.
And I just want to, I don't know if it's important, if it's worth noting, that our property and liability insurance increased so much last year that it flagged the auditors. It was over two hundred thousand dollars that it increased. So adding, oh, almost two hundred thousand, sorry, one ninety-seven. So.
Well, the good thing is at least with anybody that rents, they have to have a three million dollar policy if there's liability, so it's not, it shouldn't be.
But it's still frowned upon by our carrier.
And we had to get, we had to add special event, event insurance to our.
Even though they have to have coverage.
We still have to, we still have to have. It changed our, before, before last year, we didn't have special events, additional insurance. And then when we were making it a contract, we had to do it. So.
Do you believe that it's two hundred grand more for that specific?
No.
Okay.
No.
I was like, wow.
No, that's also based on our payroll.
I got you.
It's a lot of factors into it, but it's not, not considered.
Yeah.
And I think I told you that there, we, they had us, they still has, we did well in the fact that we were not serving alcohol, so that was in our favor. And we had to agree to not do fireworks. So it's back to the same.
Sorry, I'm hearing a conversation out in the hallway, so.
Back to, I didn't hear it. It's back to the same situation of what you, and, and if you do want to do it, there are things we need to answer. We need to post that it's being in use. And if someone is here, we need to, to discuss with law enforcement or we need to have a point person that's called. We need to make sure that there's an employee. There's a lot of things that need to come into play if we're going to do this. Not a, well, it's a liability. It's always a liability. My answer to you is to not do things that put you into that position. But I also am a member of the community that understands you want to provide that service, so we need to make sure we're doing it the smartest way. So.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's important, the, having, having events like this in the community, whether they be here on this property or in the park or wherever the case may be, are huge quality of life amenities to our, our county, our city that attracts people to want to put businesses and move into our community. And I think you can't really put a price tag on, especially when a nonprofit's wanting to do all the work. Because you can go into certain cities, I, I've gone down to Memphis, Tennessee for the Fourth of July where the city of Memphis is doing a fifty thousand dollar fireworks display and they're coming out of the city coffers, you know? And here, here we don't necessarily have that. We've got community groups that are wanting to put on these events, so it doesn't put the burden necessarily on the taxpayers directly, but indirectly through some increases of insurance or whatever it does, I guess, filter back down. Anyway, long story short, I, I think that's one of the, the greatest things that we have and we've been doing it for years. It's just last year, we put in a formalized process because in my opinion, we need to have that process to protect the county and to follow the law because you can't make private gain on, on public property. And I, I'm a huge proponent and I think this is something that we should do regardless if it's the Surtoma Club I happen to be involved in that's going to do maybe one or two of those events, or if it's the Historic River District that's doing an event down here, or if it's the Chamber of Commerce with the, the parade. And I know that was a little bit of a hiccup last year.
Yeah, they, they tried to use our electricity and they thought that they had an agreement with the city and then we had, and that was a, that's another reason that we need to have this agreement done.
Yeah, we just need to have a good formalized process. And it comes down to me like, you know, what do we need to do as, as far as like the fees? I think the, the fee structure, we, we talked a little bit about, you know, the, the bigger special event has a higher fee than a smaller special event, or do we have just one set fee?
I think you have one set fee. I, I think you have one.
It's a hundred dollars?
It's a hundred dollars.
Okay.
And for example, when we do Friday Night Lights, Friday Night Lights is put on by Christian County, the City of Ozark and Historic River District. And, you know, we have always, our contribution was the employees that helped run it on our grounds. The city waives their fee, which is a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the streets.
For a special event.
Yeah, they waive their fee and then Historic River District comes in and helps with volunteers and, but nobody makes any money. That is an event to the community that nobody's making any profits because the county and the city are, yeah, we don't make any money.
There's, well, there's private businesses that are, carriage rides.
No, we pay for that. We pay for that.
Okay.
Every, we make just enough to pay for it. We charge just enough to pay back for them. There's no coffee thing.
Okay.
And then businesses are there. I mean, they're, hopefully they're making money, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the goals of having, you know, events. Come promote the, the business district as well.
The city, the county and Historic River District are not making money.
It's not a fundraiser.
No, they front the money, then we charge it just to pay back, which we didn't make any money this year and last year. I think the, the project graduation made some, but they were selling pizzas with no electric, I mean, they were just.
Yeah.
But that's a different, those are events that are not, like those type of events are not what we're talking about. We're talking about when somebody else comes in and takes over, like Surtoma for Oktoberfest. Somebody used that as an example. They're taking over the grounds, their people are coming in. We have to say, here's our agreement for which you use our grounds. Here's the agreement for which you use taxpayer, you know, property and to use our electricity and our power is a significant liability to us and here's how, what we're going to charge to offset that. We have to protect the taxpayer, we have to protect our resources and here's the way we have, that's what we have to decide what we're going to do. I don't think that anything else really can come into that question. We're going to allow this, here's what protects us. And then if, if you are going to do an event and you're like, well, I want the event, but I, I can't afford the person and the electricity, then you, you do it with a different plan. I mean, that's on them because you can't go do it someplace else that's not tied to a building or, you know.
Or you can do it here for just a hundred dollar fee, you just want no electricity.
Yeah, and if you need it and you can't afford it, then it comes a question of, I think that's back on them. Our stance can't change. It can't change from a Saturday.
It can't be out of pocket money.
Yes. Our, our answer is the same for whatever event it is. Our liability remains the same.
Yeah, well, you could, you, yeah, you could have, you have two different rates, I guess theoretically. You could have a nonprofit rate, a for-profit rate, you know? So if you had a, a for-profit business wanting to come down and utilize the property versus a nonprofit.
I don't think that changes the cost to the taxpayer, though. That's why I don't think you can do that.
Yeah, maybe not.
Does that make sense?
Well, and I was going to say, like, the nonprofit I'm on, we get sponsors when we do our fundraisers to cover like our offset of our costs.
Sure.
So then whatever we fundraise goes directly to whatever the cause is. Not that that's always an option, but.
Sure, well, and there's more and more events all the time, so it's harder, harder and harder to find sponsors, but I, yeah, totally get what you're saying.
I just don't think we can take into account, I don't think we can say, oh, you're a church, we're not going to do this, or, oh, you're a, you make money, you're going to do that. I think that our liability remains the same no matter who you are. And that's just an unfortunate fact.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I get it, I get it. I'm just, my, my brain's racing trying to figure out all the little things that could pop up, you know?
Well, and I told HR that that was going to probably happen when they're looking at their event for the birthday. And they said the same thing, we'll just have to know what it is so we can get a sponsor or something. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I think having events down here are great, but, you know, we probably don't want to necessarily have Joe swap meet every single Saturday on the courthouse lawn.
Well, we still have the ability to.
Having, having, having the flexibility of allowing and not allowing and still being fair. Though I would love Joe swap meet down here, but.
Yeah, I know, but we, we have it in here that it's not done until it is signed. I mean, if they can put it in and, because we still have to make sure you, we have to get a copy of your insurance. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to do before we present to you for a contract signature. And then, then when it's signed, we send it back to them and they go on the calendar.
So you should probably put in, this paperwork needs to be filled out X amount of days before the event. It's a week, two weeks?
I think we have thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, yeah.
But.
It probably, it probably needs even more than that. I know the City of Ozark special event permit process, it, it, it goes through multiple departments, you know, so the application comes in and it's reviewed by Planning and Development, the Police Department, they forward it over to the Fire Department and everybody checks off on it that they, they don't have an issue, they don't see an issue. The insurance has been submitted, a site plan has been submitted. You know, we, we will submit a site plan every single year, even though there's no modifications for like the Duck Race Festival. This is our boundary, this is what we're doing. And that gives, you know, Mr. Teague would have the opportunity to say, yep, I don't see any issues, I, they, they need staffing, I can, I can have staffing available, I sign off on, you know, whoever. So maybe forty-five days before an event.
It's not a bad idea. I think we have.
Thirty.
I think the weeks, it's probably not enough if we're going to do all of the, we need a little bit more.
Well, we've had good discussions, so what do you guys think? I mean, we got a hundred dollar fee, we got thirty-five dollars an hour on.
Well, actually, when I did this, we did thirty, thirty-eight, eighty-eight, but it's technically with a thirty-five percent and with an increase, it's going to be more like fifty.
Fifty, okay. So we got numbers. So we got a hundred dollar fee, we got fifty dollars.
It sounds like that's what's just covering the cost between the electricity.
Yeah, we're not making.
Right.
And we have, this is taking time from your employees too, which we have to factor into because we don't have a formal process, but we do have multiple people who are signing off on it and making sure that we have to make a calendar, somebody has to process it.
And Richard, once this is done, do you guys have like a sheet that signs up for who wants to work the special events or do you just kind of take that?
I typically do it. I'm not always available.
Sure.
I'm like, this weekend, I'll be in a training all weekend down in Branson. But if, if the event shows up and, you know, maybe somebody's out of town, someone, as I said, and we can't get to it, I don't know what the process would be then.
Okay.
This is not part of their job description.
Yeah.
I don't know that I can, don't know that I can make them come in.
Right, yeah.
No, we don't have.
But that's nice to have that six, forty-five or sixty days you would know ahead of time, hopefully, to be able to go. Because then if you looked through your schedule and noticed everybody was gone or nobody wanted to work it because you were gone, you could go, okay, we can't have it. We just decline it, so that makes sense.
And I think the employees like the overtime.
Sure.
It just doesn't want to work out with their schedule.
Sure, makes sense. But that more time, like you said, will give time for them to look at his schedule and know that ahead of time, so.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson, you want to make a motion kind of based on the numbers that we just heard? Fifty dollars an hour, a hundred dollars for the fee, kind of this, some of the discussion that we've had.
I mean, I could, I, because I'm, I'm one, a, a member of one of the charities that would be utilizing this contract, I would prefer to, to just abstain from the, the vote, but I wanted to be a little bit a part of the conversation just to get dialogue going. The, the two events that would utilize this property are chaired by different people and I'm not one of them. I happen to work at both of those events, but I would prefer to, to just abstain from the vote and just go with what you guys think.
And I understand that too, and, and we can have Commissioner Williams do that.
And it sounds like, you know, I, I can make the motion that would keep the hourly rate at, at what it is with the hundred dollar application fee.
I'm going to need to change it.
To fifty.
I'm going to, well.
Well, we got to change, because it's thirty-five.
What I should do with the highest paid person of that department is what I should list.
Okay.
That was accurate for twenty twenty-four, but it's not for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm saying as an estimate, I would say, let's estimate it at 50, but I need to change it, and I also need to remove the eight hours, 'cause I'm gonna make that...
So, do you wanna get all that together and then come back for us to do that, or do you want us to go ahead and vote on that?
I think you could, I think you could present what you want, and then tell me to do it, and then, and vote on it, and I'll go do it.
So, the, the rate at what you're setting, at 50-ish dollars an hour with the hundred dollar application fee, the rest of the stuff, we're changing the days, how many days ahead that they need to...
That's just what's listed on our website, that's what we need to fix.
Okay.
We'll do 45 days in advance, and then we'll do, I have a checklist, but I'm going to actually try to make it better, so we are making sure...
Do we feel like 45 days is enough, or do we need to be as...
I think that's plenty.
Okay.
I think it's okay.
That they have to have all of the paperwork in 45 days in advance?
Correct.
Yeah, and then we, and I'm also gonna make it very clear that until this is all done, you don't go on our calendar, 'cause everybody calls and they say, put me down on this date, and I'm like, no, no, no...
But they don't put their...
You're not gonna hold that date.
You gotta pay your fee, you gotta do your things, correct.
And then they call other people after I tell them that.
Yeah, and, and the certificate of insurance...
We have to have that.
Correct. With Christian County listed as an additional insured.
And that's all spelled out in here that they have to do, that, that we were already doing, the part that was not happening was the use of electricity and no employee, that was where the liability was coming in, and...
Well, I think it makes sense, I mean, why it's the way it is, after hearing Richard, you know, explain that, I just didn't understand what the process was, I thought, people are just plugging in, why do we need to, you know, but would, would the building being older and having the issues and whatnot make sense?
Yeah, 'cause even if they're insuring it, if it's ours, that we left for negligence or allowed someone else to use it, it's not, if then it can fall back on us.
Sure.
So, I think that you make, with those parameters, you can approve it, and then we'll make it happen.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve everything that we've spoke about here, with the parameters being changed, to continue to have the use of grounds.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we have two ayes, and we have an abstain, and so we do that. And my, I guess my other question is, so like that gazebo out there, a lot of times, these bigger events that we just now made a motion on and voted on, I agree with that, but sometimes little church groups wanna come and sing, are we still doing a, first come, first served?
That's first come, first served, we do not police that.
First come, first served, and how do we notify the public where they wouldn't necessarily get into a fight or get us involved?
I'll, I'll list it with this, 'cause people who are, want information on it, I'll list, you know, gazebo is, other events or gazebo, that is, first come, first served, and so people know it.
Okay.
And people come up here all the time, but first, people who are, people get married, and people who're seeing pictures...
Yeah, I've seen people getting pictures taken 'cause they're getting married.
King's Church has been using it a lot, which is really nice.
I don't wanna stop them.
No, I wanna, I, yeah, and they could use, some people could be using that part of the lot or out there, and some people could be doing something over here, and, I mean, I, I, Richard and his crew have, these grounds are as, as nice and pretty as they've ever been, that I know of.
I agree.
And so, I, I think it really needs to be utilized some, I don't wanna tear all our grass up and, you know, wearing our grass out, but, but...
Yeah, and I would think, I know that last year, there was a question that we probably need to figure out, and maybe you already have, but these funds that are coming in, I know the treasurer last year said, where do I put them? Are they just going into general revenue?
Miscellaneous revenue.
Miscellaneous, okay.
Because that's where the maintenance is paid, out of general revenue.
Okay, okay, perfect, that answers that question. And I, you know, I think that we, several years ago, I mean, about almost 11 years ago, I bought a property downtown, and I thought one of the greatest things was I, on Wednesday nights, I could come out to the farmer's market and have a hot dog from Rusty's pit stop that was selling hot dogs out here during the farmer's market, and then all of a sudden, we stopped having the farmer's market out here, 'cause we, the room, the story I was told was the commission at the time didn't like the yard being torn up, and I thought, oh, what a horrible thing, you know? Having the community gather on the courthouse lawn is small-town America, that's, that's what they did back in the day, this was a gathering space for the community to get updates and news, and, like you guys were talking about earlier, sometimes a hanging happened out here on the courthouse lawn, but, well, that's news, there's a monument right out there. You brought it up earlier.
Oh, no, they, they were talking about me being a witch, actually.
Oh.
And telling us a state...
Well, sorry, I brought that up, that you had to publicly, live on YouTube, tell everybody that you were a witch.
I'm not, that's what they were joking about, they're like, well, we did nothing.
Sometimes you don't always hear the entire conversation for context, but now everybody on YouTube knows that Amber may or may not be...
Thanks a lot, right?
I'm a practicing witch.
She's like, absolutely.
Sorry.
For those on YouTube that didn't hear that, that was the auditor made those comments, sending it a corner out of camera view.
No, that's my name, no, no, I want people to build the youth that I...
Absolutely, I think it's, it's, well, it's, it's owned by the people.
It is.
And being able to come down and congregate for whatever purpose, you know, but now we have that, that mechanism in place that, that keeps us legal.
Absolutely.
And protected, so I think that's great.
All right, very good, anything else, Ms. Amber, that we need to do with that policy?
No, you can tell people, give us a little bit to finish this, and then we will, we can say that we'll start taking those applications and requests, we can probably say in...
We put that on our county website.
That's five days, well, yeah, yes, we'll put it, I kind of pulled it, but I'm gonna put it back on there, and, but I gotta have Austin, and, a little bit.
Have, have our county attorney look it over, and, and we'll get that done, I think, I think that's an important decision today.
You were looking around.
I know, you may have saw nervous looking out the window. Well, I was looking, I, I thought that was one of my brothers walking up, and I haven't seen him in a while now, he's gotten old, and it wasn't my brother, so, maybe I need to squirrel him.
Now you're judging.
He's like, squirrel him.
Okay, anything else before we go to communications? 'Cause we've got a close session after that, and I wanna talk to this gentleman out there. So, so, I'll go ahead and do communications, I think everyone knows the three commissioners are gonna be gone tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, we'll be watching our phones to make sure that we okay any accounts payable and stuff like that, so, I'll talk to Melissa today, and, and Amy knows that we're gone, too, so that she'll tell her people, but, but we'll make sure we get that okayed and, and everything. Any other communications that we need to make that you all can think of today?
Will you all be here most of today?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be gone, I have a meeting in Springfield at 1:30, but I'm coming back.
Okay, I will have a grant payroll check register that'll have to get signed today.
And I'll be watching my phone, except for when I'm in that meeting.
Physical signature.
As soon as I get, yeah, as soon as I get out of this.
Perfect. I'll be here till about 1:00, just making sure.
Oh, and chili lunch.
Yeah, we got the chili lunch that's coming on.
No, I will not eat it.
Hey, Ms. Amber, if you'll take, if you, one of you will take this over, there's a bunch of food in here, okay?
Okay.
All righty, and can...
I'm gonna have Carrie come get it, she's gonna come set up in about 15 minutes.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay. Can we, can we recess for about five minutes and then start close session? Give her a five-minute break.
Oh, also, I'm gonna say about the cheer, one state, those are cheer, we usually say that in communications.
Oh, I mean, if I can, I know one of the kids on the team is fairly decent, so...
We might wanna do something.
We, we talked a little bit about that before the meeting started.
Thanks, Richard.
The Ozark Tiger Cheer Program, basically, have done a clean sweep again this year of all of the competitions, they won the traditional state title, they won the game day state title, my daughter and three other girls won the state stunt team title.
Nice.
And miscellaneous other awards at the state competition that they have, and they're, they're like the, they're kinda like the Patriots of a few years back, everybody hates them because they keep winning everywhere they go, and they just dominate all the other programs, they come in ninth at Nationals, so, out of the entire nation, their, their team was number nine, so it's pretty good. And, so, yeah, multiple states, and the junior high, or the junior varsity program did a great job, the junior high program is better than some of the varsity programs in the state, so, there's a lot of good...
We're gonna continue that winning streak.
Yeah, so, pretty proud of them, my daughter's on the team, and it's her senior year, thank goodness, 'cause it's, it's very expensive being a cheer dad, but, anyway, she loves it, she's got asked the other day to the head coach at Missouri State University, Kate Kern, asked her to try out for their program, and that inflated her a little bit, you know, built her up, and, and so she'll be trying out for the Missouri State team.
Very cool.
All right, so, we need a motion to...
I hope so.
We need a motion going to recess.
Not to go to recess.
You're already in, Rick.
We're in recess.